Village of Peetown Committee of the Whole Meeting for May 28, 2013. I call this meeting to order and we'll begin by taking attendance.
Mr. Riker.
Here.
Mr. Hupkey.
Here.
Mr. Wicker.
Here.
Mr. Hack.
Here.
Mr. Callahan.
Here.
And Mr. Forsythe.
Here.
Okay, let the record show that there's a quorum present and official business may be conducted. First item of business being the approval or corrections of the minutes of the previous Committee of the Whole Meeting, which was April 22, 2013. Trustees, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 22, 2013 Committee of the Whole Meeting as submitted, or if you see reason to correct it, let us know.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, second by trustee Forsythe to approve the minutes of the April 22, 2013 Committee of the Whole Meeting in the Village of Peetown as presented. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
And Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, minutes are approved and presented. We have a public comment and we will notice that at the moment there is no one from the public, however, we also have a presentation scheduled. George, do you want to do the intro on that?
Yes, this is, as you recall, we sent on RFQs for someone to do a retail marketing study for the village. We sent it to two firms. Tonight, we have Mr. Aaron Farmer, Vice President of Retail Coach. He will give us a presentation on what his company offers and the board, feel free to end of the presentation, ask any questions you may have because hopefully in 30 days or so, we'll be making a selection, reportedly making a selection. Okay?
All right, thank you all.
Well, I appreciate you having us. My name's Aaron Farmer, like George said, Vice President of the Retail Coach. I want to talk a little bit about the Retail Coach, but then want to talk about really a plan we've kind of put together for you here, retail recruitment, retention, development strategy. I've been in town since this morning, had a chance to quiz some of the residents in town, go to your competing communities, and really look at what, kind of what the overall retail atmosphere is in the area. So, we'll just get started here. Just a little bit about us, we've been in business since 2000, worked projects all over the U.S. The two states we worked the most projects in are Texas and Illinois. We have a great relationship with the Illinois Municipal League. They, we've given a presentation at their last three or four meetings, but also were just, they just sponsored a webinar we presented. But really, our background is it's corporate site selection with national retailers, so we're coming from that retailer background. Today, driving into, driving into the community, really taking a look at the community through the eyes of a retailer. What are things retailers look at when they drive in? Background also in brokerage, retail leasing, development, redevelopment, downtown retail vitalization, and then also market analysis and land strategy. So, we, our background is really in that retail, we understand what retailers want to see. Kelly Kofur founded our company. He worked with Hancock Fabrics for a number of years as their, one of their site selectors, did store rollouts throughout Illinois, throughout Indiana, throughout this, really this whole area. 25 years plus experience. My background is really in the research part of it. I worked for a number of retailers, FedEx, Kinko, Sally Beauty Supply, Adidas, really in that market research, where are we going to locate, where are we going to locate our sites? And then also Kyle Robertson. He's really comes to that brokerage, the brokerage point of view, but us three would be the, really what we call the project leaders on this project. We would each be in the community. We also have support staff back at our office, but we would be the three out there pitching to retailers, pitching to developers, really putting Peetown in front of other retailers and restaurants. We've worked with retailers from as small as Dollar General, all the way to as large as Target, H. H. Gregg, Best Buy, Home Depot. We've pretty much worked with all of them. We're out there actively recruiting. We just got back from the International Council of Shopping Centers Convention. Are you all familiar with that convention? That's, International Council of Shopping Centers is a great place for, for communities to get out there and have meetings with potential retailers, potential developers, to meet with such retailers as this. I'll talk about ICSC a little bit more here in a minute, but we have unparalleled access to national, regional retailers and restaurants. Why? We actively, actually recruit them. So, we're actively out there talking to retailers. Last, last week in Las Vegas, we had meetings with over 30 retailers and restaurants, four communities we're working with. We're working in communities throughout the, throughout the state from Ottawa to Roscoe, to Waterloo, so pretty much working all areas of the state. Have done quite a bit of work in Dyer, Indiana as well, over the past, past few years, but we're out there, we actually recruit them, and that's what it takes. Just a quick quote and then be the last, last of me talking about the Retail Coach, but in our opinion, the Retail Coach's strategy and assistance has netted us over 325,000 square feet of retail. This is coming from Sam Satterwhite at the Wiley Economic Development Corporation. This is a project we worked in Texas. Example retailers recruited were Kohl's and then also Target, among a few others. So, we have that background. We've, we've been doing deals over the last few years, even during the downturn. Retailers are being a lot more selective in their choices. What's going to put your community above the rest? They want to see, they want to, they want to know without a shadow of a doubt, they can come here and be successful, and that's what we help you prepare for. We will know your community. We'll make a minimum of three trips during the project, kickoff meeting, area and local market analysis, stakeholder meetings. We meet with existing businesses, explain to them how to use this information. We meet with property owners, developers, brokers. I will tell you this, there's not another, another firm like ours that is working as many projects in the state right now, actively talking to developers and doing what we call a land use analysis. You're lucky enough to have some, some retail space, especially with the new corridor that will eventually be coming through, some prime retail opportunities right now, but a lot of what you're seeing, doesn't matter where you are, in Illinois or anywhere in the U.S., most of what you're seeing is developer driven. So, we're not just recruiting retailers, we're not just recruiting restaurants, we're going after developers as well. In order to do that, we have to understand the property, we have to talk to property owners, we have to understand, we have to talk to real estate agents, what properties are available, and part of our, part of our trips is spending time, meeting with them, understanding what, what options are available there. You have a sheet in front of you that kind of goes over our Retail 360 process, feel free to look over that, any more detail later, but I can run through it here pretty quickly here. It's really a six, six to seven step process where we come in and we do the analysis to find out what retailers, what restaurants fit here, what types to demand, how much opportunity exists, all the way to focusing on recruiting retailers, recruiting developers, putting together an action plan that includes International Council of Shopping Centers, meeting with potential retailers and developers, all the way to something that sets us apart different than anybody else is what we call our Retail Coaching Period. For no additional charge, after this process is complete, we stick, we'll stick around with you for 12 additional months to make sure you're successful. We understand that most retail deals take time to complete. You can't expect in 90, 120 business days, or 120 days, you're going to have somebody in the community. We stick around to make sure it's happening. So, we pride ourselves on that, that Retail Coaching Period. We've got to know your competition. Told you today, I spent a lot of the time looking at who you're competing with. Really directly around you, there's not a whole lot of national retailers and restaurants. So, that's, that's, that benefits you tremendously, but you're competing with, with communities south of you and then also north of you. So, we've got to come in, understand what's happening competition wise, find those retailers and restaurants that'll locate here, and find those that'll also duplicate stores here that maybe have them north or have them south. So, we've got to know not just, not just Peetown, but also your, your competing communities. Talked about road by road analysis retailer, we're going to drive every road in the community. We've got to know, in order for us to sell your community, get in front of retailers and restaurants, we've got to know it better than your best real estate agents. We've got to know what's happening at the corner of Main and Third Street. Is that a, and I don't know if that's a, a retail site there, but what's happening if we're, if we're out there pitching to these retailers and restaurants? Then we look at new development opportunities and also redevelopment opportunities. In order to determine what retailers and restaurants fit in your community, we have to know what your retail trade area is. There's really three ways to define a retail trade area. Number one is the radial trade area, where we just put a circle down around the community. That doesn't really work for your community. You know, just kind of driving around, looking at things today, your trade area is going to extend out further, you know, maybe east and west than it does north and south. So, a radial, putting that down over the community does not work. Same thing with the drive time. Your trade area is going to extend out further one direction in a drive time than it does another direction. So, that also doesn't work in this, this kind of community. So, what we have to do is what we call a retailer defined trade area. This is something we actually pioneered about five years ago. We actually come in, talk to the existing retailers and restaurants that are in the community, look at your competition, and then we hand draw your retail trade area. Retailers, restaurants have become accustomed to seeing these retailer defined trade areas, and it's just a much better depiction of community, especially small to medium sized communities, which I would say you fit in that, fit in that category, you've got to work that much harder. Just having a radial or just having a drive time is not going to cut it. Here's a good example why. Terrell, Texas, okay? And not comparing you to Terrell, but this is such a great example. Within this 15 mile radius of Terrell, we found 101,000 people that live in that, that trade area, okay? Then we looked at a drive time. We found in a 15 minute drive time, 52,000 people fit in that drive time. Then we came in and we talked to retailers and restaurants, we looked at competition, and we hand drew the trade area based on our conversations with them. And we, in that, the area that's colored in green there, includes the radial, includes the drive time, we found 155,000 people, 156,000 people in that trade area. To this day, we have been hired to come back and work with Terrell three separate times. 14 retailers and restaurants have located in the community that were a direct result of our recruitment. So, that's something we pride ourselves on, and that's such a great, that's such a great example, I wanted to use it. But we meet with and interview retailers, then we'll also have a resident survey. A lot of times, working with communities, we can put out a survey, whether it's in the, a newsletter that goes out or on a, on the website. That'll help us in determining our retail trade area, and we work with, we'll work with your staff to get that set up. In order to, just to find these traders a little bit better, we'll do a primary retail trade area and then also a secondary retail trade area. Primary retail trade area will be those retailers that are, will be those customers that shop near to me about 80% of the time. The other 20% of customers is that secondary retail trade area. We make sure you have both of them and all the information a retailer wants to see. Demographic, demographics. We study the, really the citizens, not, not just in the, in the community, but in that entire trade area for the demographics. We have partnerships with a company called ESRI, E-S-R-I. I don't know if you're all familiar with them, that also partnership with Claritas. They are the two leading providers of demographics in the retail industry. We have partnerships with both of them. We're now silver tier partner with ESRI. What that says is we get information before anybody else can. So, we have as up to date information as possible. Timing wise, as far as, I think I heard somebody say maybe 30 days selecting a, selecting a consultant, great timing. July 1st, we will have 2014 demographics ready to go before anybody else. So, having as up to date demographics is extremely important. When you're in front of these retailers and restaurants and developers, they're going to want to see what information's available, so we, we'll have 2014, we'll be able to project out to 2019. Psychographics. Has anybody ever heard of psychographics before? No. Okay, one. Psychographics is kind of the newest thing in the retail industry. To me, it's, it's the coolest thing in the retail industry right now. Best way to describe it, we all know what demographics are, age, income, those sort of things. Psychographics takes it to that next level. Demographics on steroids is another way to look at it. So, instead of looking at myself and my age, my income, those sort of things, what it does is it says, I eat at Chili's once a month. I spend $50 at the grocery store a week. I buy Kraft macaroni and cheese, or I buy this kind of macaroni and cheese. It's, it's what your major retailers and restaurants now are using to stock their stores to merchandise. Extremely important to have that information, but what we can do is we have the ability to go in and segment your entire retail trade area into separate psychographic segments. We can find retailers that have been successful in similar communities to yours and show them that, look, if you locate here, your sales volume will be very similar to this community over here that has the same psychographics. So, going in, taking it a step past demographics and using psychographics. Same, same reason why Bass Pro Shops in Springfield, Illinois carries different items than the Bass Pro Shops in Pearland, Texas. They're using psychographics to determine who their customers, customers are. One thing I want to say about that is your existing businesses. Something that we do on top of recruitment is we work with your existing businesses. We've included in that proposal a workshop with your existing businesses to explain to them how to use psychographics. Obviously, if you can have a local business expand from within, carry items that, that you have to leave town for, that money stays in the community. So, we work very closely with your local mom and pops, existing entrepreneurs to, to use psychographics. And that's, one of my favorite things to do is come in and have our team come in and do one of these seminars, because I've seen so many times where businesses have opened based off of the research we've done by an entrepreneur in town, or expanding. One of the things we also do is called a land use analysis, and I touched on this in the beginning, but really looking at specific properties. We talked about the new corridor coming in, that interchange, trying to get that interchange right there, or that, where the exits are, pinpointing specific pieces of property and really running an analysis on each property. What's going to be, you know, what's going to fit at one property, what retailers, what developers are going to fit at one property, might not fit somewhere else in the community. So, analyzing each of these properties, putting together a separate list of retailers and restaurants and developers to go after for each property is key. You've got to look at sites. You can't just go in and sell your community to a retail and restaurant. First, you sell the community, then you sell those sites. That's what's key is if retailers and developers are going to come in, they have to, they have to have specific sites. So, that's part of the reason why we spend so much time in the community. Many of our clients, I'll say all of our clients, love that we spend a lot of time in the community, we become partners with them. In order for us to get out there and actually pitch to these retailers and restaurants, we've got to know everything that's happening. We've got to know properties, landowners, those sort of things. Once we've determined that retail trade area, we want to, we run what's called a retail gap, or also called a retail opportunity or retail leakage analysis. What this does is tells us how much money is leaving or leaking the community to go other places. Told you, I stopped in town early this morning and just kind of quizzed a few people around town and said, what are, what's missing in the community? And top three responses, I said, what are people, what are you leaving for? Number one response was casual sit-down restaurants, okay? National casual sit-down restaurants, everybody said that. Number two was clothing, okay? We're leaving for clothing. We're taking our kids to get clothes, that sort of thing. So, tremendous opportunity in those sectors. Number three was, we also had people say they leave to go get groceries, okay? So, those were the top three categories. And then also, one other one that came up too was general merchandise stores. Included in general merchandise stores would be somebody like Target, those, those types of retailers. So, the leakage analysis shows us specifically by retail sector, how much money is leaving. Example up here is shoe stores. First, we determine the retail potential of that retail trade area. One thing I didn't mention about this is we have a proprietary model that we've used for the last 13 years, where we actually go in and we can determine the retail potential of the entire retail trade area, and then we compare that to the actual sales of the, of the community limits. What that does is just gives a better depiction of how much money is leaving the community, how much opportunity there is. Shoe stores, for example, a leakage of, in this community, not, not this community, another community had a million dollars in leakage. So, we targeted Payless Shoe Stores, Wrap Room Shoes, Shoe Show, Shoe Department and Shoe Carnival. Shoe Show is now in the community. We looked at psychographics, we looked at demographics to determine retailers that should be there. Those were the five that fit the makeup of the community, and we were successful recruiting. Site marketing. Last thing I'll say about the specific sites, but for each site that we determine, we are working with you to determine as a potential retail site, we will, we will put together a package so that when we're meeting with retailers and restaurants, talking to retailers and restaurants, we have location, photographs, property size, everything a retailer or developer wants to see. We're really doing their job for them, okay? Right now, a lot of, especially after the downturn, okay? A lot of the retailers and restaurants cut their real estate stack. So, now it's up to, to communities more than ever to get out there and get the information if you, if you want a chance with some of these retailers. So, we do that for you by putting information together specific to each of these sites. We'll put together a list of targeted retailers and developers to determine their level of interest they may have in, in coming to the community, okay? There's the ICSC Conference that, that is in Chicago. I believe it's in October, if I'm not mistaken. We will have you ready for that show. We will have you meeting set up with potential retailers, potential restaurants, potential developers. We've got time to have it ready to go. You will have a strategy to get in front of them. We put everything together, all of the analysis together to determine specific retailers and developers. That's key. Feasibility studies. This is something we started doing about three or four years ago. We put together what we call feasibility studies, or they're marketing packages, use, they're specific to retailers. There's not one for the community, it's specific. Each one of those retailers or developers on the match list will have their own package. Shows competition. Where is their competing, competing stores? Where are their current stores? How far away are they, distance and drive time? How much opportunity exists for them? What are their, whether, what are their projected sales? Basically, these packages are used to convince retailers and restaurants, they can't afford not, they can't afford not to locate in, in the community. So, that is key. Getting these in front of them. Talked about being at that ICSC Conference last week. For each of our communities, we put together these packages. Retailers overwhelmingly said, look, this is, this is the information we want to see. Too many times, we have communities come in, they'll have huge binders of information, we throw them in the trash. So, what we did is we put you, put these packages on USB drives, had them ready to go for these retailers and restaurants, and that's how we, or flash drives, and that's how we can have them ready, that's how we can have you ready for ICSC. So, customizing everything so that it is retailer or developer specific is key. We also have economic development, people on our team as well. We'll, we'll come in and we'll make community and economic development recommendations. Sometimes it's things like medians not being mowed, or those types of things. We also do a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats analysis. Coming in kind of as an outsider, talked about it earlier, looking at it through the eyes of a retailer. What are things that are maybe are keeping retailers and restaurants out? Try it when you're driving home today. You know, try looking at the community through the eyes of a retailer, see if there are some things that, that maybe you've overlooked just in the, in the past. And then to kind of wrap this up here, we have that phase six I talked about, that really sets us, sets us apart is that 12 month coaching period, our Retail Coaching Retainer. At no additional charge, we stick with you for an additional 12 months. What that includes is updated demographics, updated psychographics. Basically, you'll have 2014 information, but then we'll update it again in 2015. Each of those feasibility packages we talked about will be updated. So, this is something I really, this is something we really pride ourselves on is, is sticking with the communities because we, we believe that's what it takes. You can't expect something to come in overnight. It's going to take time, but being present with you at ICSC conferences, having a, having a plan, and then, and then working through this 12 month coaching period is key. Just to kind of wrap up here, you know, retail expertise, our sole, sole focus is retail expansion and development, what do retailers seek, and then developing strategies that are customized to your community. We have a great marketing team that will put together, not just those feasibility packages I talked about, but all kinds of flyers, can help with the website, helping get the, the marketing going. What are retailers looking for? Most of the time, before they come to their, to your community, they're looking at your website, they're looking at things like that. We can help with that as well. Relationships, like I said, we've been doing this for a number of years. Relationships is something we like to really point out. Spending time in the community, getting to know the community is what it takes to, to really sell a community to retailers and restaurants. Think that's key. Results. That should say Columbia, Tennessee, but with their broad expertise and unique service, Retail Coach has helped Columbia, Tennessee define its full economic potential, but more importantly, the Retail Coach has given, given the city effective pragmatic solutions to make that potential a reality. And then the Retail Coach retail expertise and relationships are critical to achieving results. So, like I said, different than anyone else, we become partners with the community, we spend time in the community, we're actually out there seeking, we're actually out there recruiting retailers and restaurants. We don't, we don't work with drive times, we don't work with radials, we provide that, but retailers want to see much more than that. We don't just send a letter out to these retailers and restaurants and expect them to come knocking. We, we do the recruitment. We help set up conference calls between the, between the community and the retailers and restaurants. So, it's much more than just something that's going, a study that we're going to send to you, sit on the shelf. We make sure, especially with that 12 month coaching period, that it's something that is an action plan, something that's going to take place, and something that's going to actually happen for recruiting retailers and restaurants. So, that's, that's our process. Like I said, spend a lot of time in the community today, see a lot of opportunity here, especially with the corridor that'll be, tell me the name of the corridor again, that's going to be. Iliana, Iliana Corridor, that will be coming in. I believe over the next few years, that'll have a huge impact on what retailers and restaurants decide to do in this community.
Careful, the lights are coming on. This is a time for the boards to ask any questions of Mr. Farmer that they might have. I, I can kind of break the ice a little bit. Aaron, someone from your firm, when we first approached you, when I first approached you six or seven weeks ago, it might have been.
Yes.
Shot me a proposal that I intentionally did not go through and read.
Good.
Is that proposal that you want to forward to the board, or am I waiting on a second one?
Yeah, I think, let us go back just a little bit from spending a little bit more time. Kelly Kofur, President of, is the one that put that, that proposal together. He knows the community fairly well, but just kind of seeing some things, I want to make a few tweaks to that proposal, take out a few things, add a few things, but he, he does know the area well from his, his time with that retailer. So, let us, let us make a few changes, if that's okay, and we can have that team before the week's over.
That's why I asked.
Yes.
Okay.
Great. I'll tell you, nothing, nothing, nothing replaces quality time in a community, and that's the same thing with our process, is spending time, getting to know each and one, each one of you, that's what it's going to take. It's not something that we can do back in our offices in Mississippi, or offices in Texas. It's something that we need to be here on a regular basis. Just like while I'm here, we're also working in Roscoe. Everybody know where Roscoe is. Two to three days in the Roscoe Market, working with Dave Crinkie, which is the, the Village President there. Nothing can replace that quality time.
I think, you know, from general conversations the board has had in the past, we would like to, A, know what we can attract as we sit here today, okay? What opportunities are we missing? Two, identify things that we would like to have in the future. And three, what does it take to get from here to there for the future?
Sure.
You know, if, if, you know, we're not ready for a Red Lobster today, since everybody kind of focused on, on, on sit-down casual dining.
Sure.
If we're not ready for a Red Lobster today, what kind of things does Red Lobster looking for?
Sure.
If that's one of the things that we've identified, and what do we, what do we need to do to get there?
Sure. Well, typically, somebody like a Red Lobster, or maybe somebody like a Chili's, okay? Will look for 50,000 people in a retail trade area. I can't tell you right now that you're at 50,000.
I understand.
Be completely honest with you, I don't think you are.
I understand.
But there are, being honest with you, but I think there are some retailers and some restaurants that you could go after. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I didn't see somebody like a Tractor Supply. Is there a Tractor Supply in the community?
There used to be one in Bradley, Burbank.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they, they, Farm and Fleet was next door to them, so they went out of business.
Yeah. Somebody like Tractor Supply would be very successful in this community. Tremendous opportunity there. I guarantee, when we go through and we look at your, your retail leakages, that, that would be a huge, huge retail leakage.
But Aaron, I mean, you, you kind of hit my point there.
Sure.
When you said, Red Lobster needs a 50,000 person trade area, and I don't think you're, well, that's fine, that's what we need to know.
Yeah.[1784.83] Yeah.
You know? People need to have a realistic perspective on what it takes to get to this one, or that one, or this group, this class of retailers or restaurant stores, and, you know, then we have to look at what it takes to get there, and is that where we wanna go?
You know, I think the corridor coming in will help, okay? That's, I think, starts construction, I think y'all said 2015 or 2016. That'll help. There are retailers, there are restaurants, maybe like an Applebee's, somebody like that would, that would be a better fit right now than maybe a Red Lobster. So there are a number of retailers, a number of restaurants that would fit, but some of those Red Lobster, those types that maybe look for a larger trade area, you're gonna get there eventually, I believe, but that's, we're probably looking 10 years out, to be honest with you. But we've got, and I think it's key, you've gotta get in front of these retailers and restaurants now, because a no today or no tomorrow could be a yes, or could be a maybe in six months to a year from now. And that's the reason why we stick with you for so long, is working on that. But I think a key for this, I think a key for your community is focusing on the recruitment of developers, okay? So we talked about retailers, and you need to focus on retailers, but focusing on a developer that maybe has relationships with a number of restaurants and retailers, getting in front of those developers as well, I think is what'll benefit your community the most.
Okay. What's kind of your timeline if you were selected?
We would be able to start immediately, I would look at, I believe you said 30 days out. We'd be able to make a trip within that next two weeks, so that would put us into, probably the first two weeks of July, we'd kick off this project. To do our analysis phase, because we spend so much time in the community, you're probably looking at somewhere between 90 and 120 days to do the analysis and recruitment, the initial recruitment. Then, we stick with you for an additional 12 months. During that 12 months, we do recruitment, and a lot of communities like to have us back to do year two, year three recruitment. So could get started, first two weeks in July, 90 to 120 days to do the analysis, have our trips here, start the recruiting.
Now, I want, I want the board and everyone to have a clear understanding of what you mean by recruiting.
Okay.
What, over and above data aggregation, psychographics and all that, and shipping it to developers?
Yeah.
I mean, what do you do? Are you going, are you gonna knock on people's door and say, you know, we're Retail Coach, you know us, we've got this community, we think you two need to get together and let's talk, or what do you do? I don't want, I don't want an unrealistic expectation, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, and I'm glad you said that, because this is something that distinguishes us. When we say recruitment, it's not just handing over a package. It's meeting with them in person many times, setting up meetings at ICSC. If it means coming back to meet with them six months from now, here with the group here, we do that. So recruitment for us is not just sending a letter, not just sending these packages, it's actually sending out emails and making phone calls to them, many times, meeting with them in person. That's what it takes. We can't just send something in the mail and expect them to open it up. We don't, we send out, I mean, we've got it, we've got it set up, so that we can send out, we know when to send out an email. So starting on that 60th day, we'll send out the first email. 75 days, we'll make that phone call. 90 days, we'll send out another email. So that's, that's how we do that. Something I didn't touch on in this presentation, but on our website, we have a number of retailers and developers that come to our website, looking for communities, looking for information. You'll have your own landing page on our website. So you can actually link to, you know, many communities use kind of our landing page as their economic development website. Has all the information, has the studies, retailers, developers, really anything they're gonna wanna see. So for recruitment from us, I'll be completely honest with you, I've never seen anybody do as thorough a recruitment as us. I've seen, I've seen a, probably the other company that you're working with or talking to, seen them send out a letter, but never the recruiting emails, phone calls, sitting down with them, so.
Okay. And you'll do that for approximately 90 to 120 days, plus 12 months after that?
Plus 12 months. What we do is, the way we have it set up, and when we, when we come to our kickoff meeting to kick off this project, we can really sit down and figure out exactly what days we wanna send it out on. We'll make our recommendations, make sure that sounds good to you, but we'll start contacting within 60 to 90 days. Then, during that coaching period, you don't wanna do it every two weeks. Typically, during the coaching period, we do it every month, every two months is when we make the reach out to these retailers and developers. The other thing is, once we, since we have so much up-to-date information all the time, that's one of the best times to reach back out to these retailers and developers, is when we have new demographics, we have new psychographics, to say, look, this is, this is the new growth rate, this is what's happening here. That's just a good time to get that information sent to them. We do it there in initial process, but also during our coaching period. So you're really, you're really getting about 18 months, 16 to 18 months of recruitment.
And you said we'd be ready for October for the show, Expo in Chicago?
You would. I believe it's the first week of October, don't hold me to that, I think that's right. But we will have information ready to go for you, we'll have meetings with retailers and developers for you and your staff to meet with, you'll be ready for that show.
What's the, go ahead. What's the average size population that you work with?
We typically work anywhere from probably about 2,500 to 15,000 is kind of our bread and butter. We work a lot larger projects, we just finished up a project of a community about 90,000. But a good example, if you look at the communities we're working in, Roscoe, Waterloo, Ottawa, they're not extremely large communities, those communities that can really use our help. Maybe don't have a full-time person that's constantly calling on retailers and restaurants. Anywhere from probably 25 to 15 or 20,000 is kind of our bread and butter.
What's the success rate?
I don't have a specific success rate, but I can tell you this, since we stick with you for so long, you're gonna have success. And typically, I'll give you a good example. I told you, we work most of our projects in Texas and Illinois. Seem to have the most going on retail-wise for many other states, really. And a good example is Sandsaba, Texas, town at 2250. We're successful at recruiting a 20,000-square-foot general merchandise store, and also two restaurants within the first six months. So that's a, that's a good example there. In Ottawa right now, we're working on some projects, there's been some things in the paper, I can't talk specifically about who we're working with there, but are having a lot of success there right now. And then also, in Roscoe, we had some great meetings last week at that International Council of Shopping Centers convention. So retail is on the upswing, it seems like everywhere you go, you're starting to see retail restaurants come out of the ground again. That's key. So from a success rate, I'm willing to put us up against anybody. But we've never really tracked it specifically, I can give you some examples of some communities that have had success, like I said, Sandsaba, and if that would be helpful, I can, I can put that together to send out to the board also.
Including your proposal, some success you've had in communities, A, about our size.
Sure.
You know, 2,500 to 6,000 or 7,000.
Sure.
Prefer, preferably in Illinois.
Okay.
And, you know, not to stretch the point, but it's close to the same scenario as we have.
Absolutely. We'll put references on that list as well, so you can call actual staff, and you'll be pleased with that.
There aren't a whole lot of national companies that do this.
Right.
And you could probably name the other company that we're gonna be talking to.
Probably could, yeah.
Yeah. Start to, yeah. Tell us why we should pick you instead of them.
Because we're not just a data provider. That's what, that's what you're gonna get. And I never wanna talk bad about another company, so I'll just talk about what we do.
Yeah, talk positively about you.
I'll talk about what we do.
Perhaps, yeah.
We do the recruitment. It's not just, like I talked about, sending a letter, it's not using radials, it's not using drive times, it's going in, spending time in the community. Like I said, nothing can replace that. So that's what really sets us above the rest, is our time in the community and the outreach. We just go so much further. It's not something we do from, it's not something we do from our offices, it's something that we're in the community doing, so. I've got a, I've got a handout, how to choose a retail consultant, and I'll pass that around to everybody, you know, that has some of the highlights of what our firm does, so, differently.
Other questions?
Well, if you can accomplish something in Piatto, my head, leave me, I'll be the first one to take my hat off, but we could have the finest restaurant in the world in Piatto. I've lived here almost 50 years, and people just, I don't know what it is. They all wanna go out of town, they don't wanna do it here. And you can get this, and leave me, I'll be the first one to tip my hat to you.
Sure. Well, and I'll be completely, completely honest with you, you're never gonna be able to capture everybody that's leaving.
That's right.
If, you know, if we can reduce that, you're gonna have a lot of retail leakage, I don't think anybody in here will disagree with that. Most of your money is leaving the community, okay? If we can reduce that leakage 10 to 20%, that's huge. You know, if we can, if we can get a restaurant here, or we can get a retailer or development here, that's gonna keep people, once or twice a month on a weekend, shopping here, I look at that as a success, because there's always that event factor to it. People are going, hey, while we're here, we're gonna see a movie, we're gonna go grocery shopping, we're gonna go to this restaurant. So I think the way you look at this is, at least to start out until the population grows in this area, is reducing that leakage or reducing that bleeding by 10 to 20% at a time. If you look at it that way, we'll have success.
You guys look at those kind of, I guess they wanna be retailers or developments, but, you know, concert venues, movie theaters.
Right.
Stuff like that too, or?
We do an entertainment analysis, where we can come in, and per, for each person in that retail trade area, we can tie a specific dollar amount of what they spend on entertainment every year. Where are they spending their money? We can break it down by movie theater, to concerts, to, you know, those sort of things. So, yeah, we'll include that in our proposal, an entertainment analysis. And it's pretty cool that, you know, nowadays, we're using psychographics and demographics for each person in this room, we could tie a specific number of you. When's the last time you went to a movie theater? You know, went to the movies six months ago, went to the movies last week. That's the kind of information we can provide, and that would be helpful in that instance.
What about sports?
That's, sports is another one we can do. Sports and leisure is analysis we can run, where it'll tie specific sporting goods sales, but then also baseball tournaments, okay? Would a big baseball complex or softball complex work here? We've done that in communities before. And, you know, I'd be willing to, if we get a chance to work with you, kind of put that in the, put that in the proposal, no extra cost, 'cause those are some things to look at. What are some things that you can do to bring people here? And that's gonna be key, is, you know, the corridor, Iliana corridor, is that?
Yeah. Plus we've got I-57 already.
Yeah, that's, you know, you're gonna have, and I-57, you're gonna have people that you can get to stop here, but then also that tourism factor too. What are some things that can bring communities here? And those are some analysis that we can run to determine. Well, we'd love a chance to work with you. I will send over much more information and proposal by the end of the week, if that's okay. We'll send over references, and really think it's good that we got to spend some time here in the community, really looking around, and we'll put together a proposal that fits your needs. We don't wanna give you something that you don't need, something that, something that can be, can be useful to you, so.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for having us. My card is in front of each of you, my cell number's on that card.
Okay.
Any of you has any questions, feel free to call me on my cell, we'll try to answer, so, thank you all.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Aaron. There's no further questions on this topic. Do we have any other topics? Anything that, any of the board members would like to bring up?
Yes, I do.
Okay. What would they be?
We're gonna have some construction going on down in Joliet, starting on the 3rd of June. Is there any, and they're gonna have their road closed down, according to the signs, it's gonna be closed starting June 3rd. Is there any?
Joliet Road?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Is there any way possible to put some type of a signage where there's no through traffic, local traffic only, on that Oak Street? Because we have enough issues as it is with people taking shortcuts and flying down that street without added traffic with eight children under.
I don't think it's gonna be closed, you just said, construction starts June 3rd.
It said road closed.
I didn't see that.
Okay.
We're gonna re-surface that.
Oh.
I think after the ramp, but I'm not, I gotta, I'll check.
You need this too?
Okay, thank you.
That would be from like Brass G to Mill. I mean, that's the two blocks, that's all it is. The other issue I have is, are there any updates on these, this ISO of the Park District Or is there any way of finding out? I mean, because it's really an ISO for the community, that's all. Both buildings, that they're in, I don't know if it's over here, or were. Are there any updates that we can get on that, or?
You can ask for an update, they've got valid building permits, and they're doing work as they, as they can, so I don't know, other than that.
You're talking about where Fuzzy used to be?
Yeah.
They ran out of money. It's as simple as that, they don't have any money.
Are permits indefinite? Are they good for a period of time?
As long as you're, well, as long as you're acting on them, they can stay open for a while, yes.
Even, even beyond a year?
Yeah.